Excuse me. Okay, welcome, uh, welcome Mohopack community to our Board of Education, uh, Thursday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, regular, uh, school board meeting. Uh, what I'd like to do right now is could I make a motion, please, to open the meeting?
So I'll move.
Thank you, Mike. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Tanner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, please join me, please join me standing for the play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, again, welcome Mohopack. Great, uh, well, I tell you, it's a tale of two very different days. We had seventy-five degree weather, uh, yesterday and thirty-five degree weather today. So it was, uh, uh, my, my face is if I'm red, it's because I'm windburned to no, uh, to no end. So, uh, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce, uh, cause we have a pretty, uh, pretty action-packed, uh, uh, agenda for this evening. I'd like to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, uh, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo. And Anthony, you're on. Take it away.
Thank you very much, President Mangan. And, um, so it's great pleasure that I introduce Mr. Steve Luciano, our, um, Athletic Director, as we honor our winter sports teams, uh, our league and regional championships for this, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, winter season. And we're so thankful that we were able to get the season in and play, um, and we're going to honor our student athletes and our coaches tonight. So, Mr. Luciano, over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Long time no see, Mr. Mangan. Um, no, I really appreciate you, um, the board having, Mr. DeCarlo having us on tonight. Um, you know, we went from not having a winter season at all and then scrambling and, and having approval from the state to having a full winter season in a matter of weeks. And, you know, our coaches and our athletes were amazing in how they handled the adversity that was brought to them. Like I said, we, we really did not think we were having any high-risk sports, um, come December. And then all of a sudden, we get an announcement on a Friday afternoon from the state that high-risk sports are approved. Um, and with the work, you know, with the work with the administration, um, Dr. Stoll and Ms. Clovisi, um, to, to make this happen, you know, the support they showed was fantastic, uh, cause we had a lot of hurdles to clear with the DOH to make this season happen. And, uh, the support was fantastic. And the fact that we had the season was great, cause we had such a successful winter season, um, from all our teams. Um, you know, our, our sw- our, our ski team, we, uh, had a great season. We had a skier, uh, compete in the sectional championships. Um, our winter track season, which is normally done indoors, was done outdoors in the middle of winter. And our coaching staff was fantastic in making that the best experience possible for our athletes. We ended up running four or five track meets where, um, you know, most schools, we got one in, some schools got none in. Our last meet, we actually ran into Palisades Mall parking lot. Um, they cleared that out and set up a, set up a course so our athletes could run. And, um, you know, we went from usually running down in the Armory in New York City indoors to doing our whole track season outdoors. And it was, you know, different, but rewarding for our athletes. And it was just the fact that we were able to get them to compete was fantastic. You know, hockey had a very good season. Uh, we made it to the, you know, regional semifinals. Uh, we had a couple of all-league, all-section players. Um, they competed very well after a rough season last year. They had a very bound, good bounce-back season. And, you know, I think the future is bright for our hockey program. And, you know, that brings us to where we are today, honoring our athletes that we have on right now. Um, you know, we were going to start with our bowling team first. Um, our girls' bowling absolutely dominated, uh, their league this year. And, uh, we had three bowlers that made all-league and all-section. Um, you know, Marina Agarzani, Gabby Rito, and Krista Dietz were all, all-league and all-section. And they helped lead us to, uh, a regional, a regional championship. Uh, we balled out of Fishkill Bowl. And I think we ended up winning by four or five hundred pins, which in bowling, I'm the bowling coordinator for section one, so I've been doing this for like nine years. So, um, to see our team dominate like that was, was awesome. Like I said, a five hundred point, a five hundred pin win is probably winning basketball by thirty or forty points. Um, you know, they dominated today. Uh, it was a fantastic season. And I'm very proud of them. Coach James Carroll did a great job. So I'm going to let James Carroll, uh, just talk a little bit more about the team and introduce, and introduce our girls.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Luciana. And obviously, thank you, uh, Superintendent DeCarlo, members of the board. Um, it's, it's great that you guys are able to recognize us, our team, and obviously the student athletes. Um, you know, they always come first. And, um, like he said, we had a fantastic season, and I couldn't be more proud of the girls. Um, he, he already addressed that we had three all-section bowlers. Uh, actually, all five of the girls were all-league bowlers. So, um, we, the, the three all-section bowlers were the top three bowlers in our league. Um, and, and all five girls were, were great. They, they came into the, the season, you know, no issues with the, with wearing the mask. They, um, you know, no issues with the scheduling changes. And, um, we had to do a lot of our, our bowling matches, um, semi-virtual and, and bowl against teams that were at other alleys. And they had no problem with that at all. Um, they, you know, they both like champions and they, they finished the season, uh, you know, great. And we have a couple of graduating seniors in, uh, Marina Angrasani and Krista Dietz. Um, and then we have, you know, three that I, I hope that are going to be returning next year. A couple first-year bowlers that made all-league, which is, is, uh, a great accomplishment for the first year in, on the team. And, uh, I'm just very proud of how they handled themselves and, and how they carried themselves throughout the season. So, um, girls, if you want to just, uh, unmute yourself one by one, Krista, Marina, Gabby, uh, Emma and Juliana, if you're here, just introduce yourself and, you know, give your, um, your grade. And introduce yourselves.
Okay, you know, I guess I'll go first. Um, I was actually surprised how the season turned out. Like, I was really nervous, cause I didn't know how the other teams would be and how we would handle it. But i- in the beginning, it was a little slow and we were like trying to get stuff together. But by the end of the season, we were just like on fire and everyone was doing good. And I don't know, the team really bonded well this year. So.
Marina, Juliana, or Emma, are you guys there?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. Um, yeah, I totally agree with Gabby.
That might be all that's here. Um, I know one of them was having a, um, a scheduling conflict. So, um, that might be it. But again, I just want to say, congratulations, girls. You guys did an amazing job this year. And, uh, thank you again to the board, uh, Superintendent DeCarlo and Mr. Luciana. I appreciate it.
No, it was a lot of fun watching, watching the girls perform this year. They, they were, they were tremendous. Um, and then, you know, the next team that we're going to honor is our gymnastics team coached by the legendary Vin Collins. Um, you know, Coach Collins has been doing this for a very long time. Um, and, you know, being new here, um, just, you know, talking to him and listening to him, you know, you really get a good feel of how, you know, how, about Mayapack and the things that have been done over the years. And it's been, you know, it's been great getting to know him and having, and, and watching him coach, cause he's, you know, he did a fantastic job with the gymnastics team. You know, he just finished JV football and, you know, unprecedented spring season of, of football. Um, and now he's moving on to track. And he, you know, he's great for our student athletes. Um, he's a great role model. And our gymnastics team performed very well. Usually, we're in, you know, our Lakeview Gym, um, you know, and, and, you know, due to the circumstances we're dealing with this year, um, we, you know, we went out, we went, uh, to an outside, uh, gymnastics place and which welcomed us with open arms and, you know, really did a great job hosting us. And, um, you know, Odyssey Gymnastics, they were fantastic hosts. They welcomed us. And, um, Coach Collins had a great year with his girls. Um, they won, you know, the regional championship, which, uh, you know, it's really stiff competition with gymnastics. And the girls really performed well throughout the season and came together to win the championship. And I'm going to let, uh, Coach Collins, uh, go over his season.
Uh, Steve, thank you for your kind words. I, I didn't pay him to say any of that. So. Like Mr. Carroll said, uh, thank you to Mr. DeCarlo and to the board for recognizing all of our student athletes. We, we've got some great, not only student athletes, but, but student musicians and onstage and illusion. And, and, and we all know how talented all of our students are. Uh, thank you for recognizing the gymnastics team. Uh, I'd like to introduce the girls first. Uh, I, I think most of the girls are here. If, girls, if you'd just like to say hello when I call your name or a wave, if you're on the screen here, that's great. Uh, we'll start with our captains, our seniors, Jamison Castrataro, Leslie Sealy, Nicole Gianetta, and Rachel Romero. Our juniors, Kaylee Anne Hammond and Juliette LeBlanc. We have three talented 10th graders in Sophia Alvarez, Leah Grab, and Jade Pichulo. Uh, a very solid rookie group. Uh, the plus one returning with our ninth graders, Alessia Christina has been with us for three years. And three very talented rookies, uh, Cecilia Haberling, Caitlin Pallange, and Jaden Suni. And a very talented rookie seventh grader in Lexi Castrataro. Talented is, is one thing. Uh, some of the recognitions this year, uh, we had several gymnasts we recognized as all-league, and that was Jamison Castrataro, Lexi Castrataro, Nicole Gianetta, Leah Grab, Kaylee Anne Hammond, Juliette LeBlanc, Caitlin Pallange, and Rachel Romero. Additionally, we had five girls recognized as all-section. Jamison Castrataro, Lexi Castrataro, Nicole Gianetta, Leah Grab, and Caitlin Pallange. Uh, you know, the girls will tell you that our main goal every year is to qualify for the New York State Scholar-Athlete Recognition. And again, the, the team did. So once again, we were recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as a New York State Scholar-Athlete Team. And, uh, a lot of people have always said that, you know, the gymnasts, the athletes don't spend enough time in the classroom. Uh, but I, I, I had, I strongly disagree. You know, the gymnasts, uh, besides being members, the upperclassmen being members of the National Honor Society. You know, our seniors have received this recognition every year. They've been on the team. And I think the team has re- has received this recognition every year since it started, I think in ninety-six or ninety-seven or, or something like that. So it's, it's a nice, it's a nice recognition for them. Uh, athletically, like, you know, Mr. Luciana said, uh, we finished ten and one. Uh, we were, uh, section one tournament champions. Uh, additionally, two, uh, big recognitions, section one scholar gymnasts. This is a, a recognition by section one, the section one gymnastics committee on, on student athlete seniors who are top-of-the-class athletics, uh, in academics, in athletics, and in community service. And this year, we had Jamison Castrataro and Nicole Gianetta recognized as section one scholar athletes as well. So, uh, a, a great season all the way around academically, athletically. Uh, to our seniors, you know, they always know that once they're on the team, they're on the team for life. And they'll always be a big part of the success of this year. And we all know how this year went. The key word this year was being flexible. And I think all the teams were flexible in scheduling. The way that we adapted, you know, to the protocols and the gymnasts wearing their masks as they are tumbling upside down on the beam, circling giants on the bars, uh, it was really something to marvel. And, and I, I told the team several times over the course of the season. And I truly mean it from the heart. I, I'm very, very proud of their accomplishments this season. So, Mr. DeCarlo and board, thank you very much for the recognition. And gymnasts, congratulations. And all the student athletes, congratulations.
Thank you, Coach Collins.
Great job.
Now, before I talk about the next team, you know, just piggybacking off what Coach Collins said, you know, the flexibility of our athletes and following the protocols, you know, for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds to, you know, follow these protocols, you know, I mean, it, it shows a lot of the character they are. Um, you know, being new to Mayapack, I, I, I can't be more impressed with our student athletes. They are an amazing group of resilient, um, young men and women who really, you know, understood the importance of following these protocols if they wanted to have a season. You know, we saw a lot of teams get shut down during the winter season. A lot of teams went on, uh, quarantine. And our winter teams, we, we fought through it and we played pretty much every game we were supposed to. Um, you know, I think we lost maybe one girl's basketball game because the other team was on quarantine, but nothing to do with our team. And, you know, a lot of that really, you know, has to do with our student athletes understanding the importance of our protocols. And, you know, the fact that our trainer, uh, Brenna, who's out on the lacrosse field right now with our lacrosse team, you know, everything that she's done to keep our athletes safe and make them understand what they have to do. So, you know, um, you know, Brenna was a huge part of the success that our teams have had this year. And, you know, uh, I'm really proud to have her on our staff and working with our athletes. And I guarantee, if you ask every one of our athletes right here how important Brenna is, they all, they all understand, um, you know, what she brings to our, our athletic program. So that was a big part of our success this winter as well. Um, the next team we have up is our boys' basketball team coached by Mr. Tom McMahon. Um, fantastic season, uh, league champs. Uh, you know, one loss the entire season. And, um, until we got to the championship game where we ran into a very tough Fox Lane team, you know, we didn't quite finish the way we wanted, but the, you know, they left everything out on the floor, played with a lot of heart, you know, to finish league champions, to make a championship game, and, you know, play the way they did in such a short period of time. Uh, I give a lot of credit to the coaching staff of Tom McMahon and, you know, uh, Assistant Coach and slash Assistant Principal, Matt Calibro. Um, you know, they, they really worked, worked well together and, you know, really did a good job bringing the team together. So, um, Coach McMahon, uh, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just really want to echo the sentiments of everyone to this point and thank, uh, Mr. Luciana for his leadership, as well as, you know, obviously Brenna and then Superintendent DeCarlo, who is one of our biggest fans. Um, and the Board of Education for allowing all of this to happen. And I know even Dr. Stoll, working with the Department of Health, hours on hours trying to get this season through. Um, and particularly even President Mangan, who, um, I think made nearly every one of our games. So, um, it was a special season for sure. And what an opportunity to be able to get it in. And I think what we're seeing with all of these student athletes and these recognitions tonight are these are the missed moments that we would not have gotten had we not gotten this season in. And so all of the people, you know, starting with Superintendent DeCarlo and even Coach DiMatteo and even our kids who advocated for this. And the lesson that they learned just in self-advocating over this is some, an experience that they should take for life. Because at the end of the day, none of them would have had this experience had that advocacy not taken place. And look at all we've accomplished. Look, even, even the teams that are not as successful this year, they still built the memories. They still took the journey and how important that is. And I, I can tell you, I, I would have been crushed had we not been, uh, had Coach Calibro and I not been able to take the journey with this group of kids. Um, and it starts with our two co-captains, Vin Bastone and John Cosentino. And then the rest of our senior class, Miles Buckley, Chris Clark, and Luke Suku. Then we have a group, a tremendous group of juniors returning next year, Michael Callahan, Anthony DiMatteo, Max Gomes, Sean Massett, Patrick McMahon, Jack Moore, Craig Perry, Colin Ranahan, and Ryan Riley. And so as many years as you coach, and Coach Collins has got about, you know, five times as many as I have. But every journey is different and they're all unique. And to be able to go through this journey so that these seniors can leave with this experience and these juniors can feel what it's like is, is just an honor. To be successful on top of that and win a league title and be the regional runner-up and finish the way that we did, um, makes it that much more special. But it's, it's the experience, it's the journey that matters, not necessarily the success at the end. And I think that, you know, our district, particularly the leadership in our district fought for this so that we could get through this season. And as Mr. Luciana said before, you know, I look at all of the, the things that are going on, team shutdowns even during the winter and now into spring two or, uh, excuse me, fall two and spring. And I just think every day how fortunate we were, how fortunate we were to play, how fortunate we were to get the entire season in not interrupted. Um, and that is a credit to our student athletes. And it's not just about the wins and the losses. It's about being responsible. And they were, they were responsible all season knowing that they wanted to get this in. And I can't thank them enough. Coach Calibro and I are so proud of them. We're obviously going to miss those five seniors, but it was a tremendous year. And, um, there are not enough thanks to go around for everyone that made it happen.
Thanks, Coach. No, and, um, you know, our last team really did have, you know, had a special year bringing it all together. This, um, this group of, of young women were absolutely amazing on the basketball floor this year. They went twelve and one overall, uh, eight and oh in their league. And, you know, they had a tough loss to end the season against Arlington, which I, I mean, was actually probably almost like a wake-up call. And then when the playoffs started, they, they were an absolute, absolute buzzsaw. You know, they dismantled, you know, perennial state powerhouse Austin. I mean, Austin's won Federation Champions, state championships. And we put, uh, I mean, the game was over in the first quarter. Uh, you know, we put an absolute beating on them. And the girls really were focused. And I think from the moment we, they realized we were having a season, they had one team goal in place and they played for the team. And it was, you know, it was all-team, all-team, all-team for the entire season. And you could tell by the way they were playing. Um, you know, they had unbelievable individual accolades. Um, and I'm sure Coach Conklin will get into that in a second. Um, but the way they played as a team and with the focus they had for their goal of winning the regional championship, um, which was from day one of practice till the moment the buzzer went off against Brewster and we were regional champs. So I really want to congratulate the girls on an amazing season. Um, and unfortunately, uh, Coach Skaz, he, he's down in South Carolina right now and had a family obligation, couldn't be here. He was awarded section one Coach of the Year for our region, uh, with the effort he gave. So congrats to Coach. Um, and I'm going to turn it over now to Coach Conklin. We also have our JV coach and slash Assistant Coach, uh, Dave Carpizzano, who was a big part of the program as well to help out with our team. So, uh, Coach Conklin and Coach Carp, uh, you guys are up.
Thank you, Mr. Luciano. And, uh, thank you to the board and Mr. DeCarlo and, um, obviously Lynn in the background, always doing everything great for the kids. Um, and last but not least is Brenna. I, I feel like a lot of stuff's already been said and thanking everyone, but we really do appreciate everything. Um, I know, at least for our team, I, I feel like pretty much everyone during the winter season, we didn't have anyone shut down. And that all starts from the leadership from the top to the student athletes. Um, so just thank you to everyone. Um, yeah, we, we had a great season with a twelve and one record overall. Um, I know a lot of our players were particular happy with, um, losing to Arlington this year for one loss. But, um, overall, you know, with the winning of the Putnam Northern Westchester Large School, um, regional championship, that was our goal from day one. And, uh, that was all done from the leadership of the seniors. And, you know, I, I just want to, I guess, say some accolades that, um, we received this year, all-league. Um, every one of our stars, Caitlin O'Boyle, Mia Clammer, Lauren Bieberman, Julie DeBrackey, and Mel DeMayo all received, we, all-league. Um, Mia Clammer was league MVP. And then all-section, we actually had three girls this year with Caitlin O'Boyle, Mia Clammer, and Laura Be- Lauren Bieberman again. Um, so overall, great year. Um, you know, and I just want to share, I guess, our overall roster this year as well. Um, starting with our team captains, Mia Clammer, Caitlin O'Boyle, Shannon Becker. Um, Shannon, unfortunately, didn't get the opportunity to play this year with a little bit of injury, but was definitely a huge part of the team. Um, then we went to Amanda Bieberman, who was also a senior. Uh, Julie DeBrackey, Lauren Bieberman, Christina Rush, Jess Durbins, Julia Palacelli, John Ruspoli, Piper Clammer, Marissa Clammer. So, um, overall, it was a successful season. I just wanted to throw a big shout out to Coach Skaz. Again, unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here. Um, but he won League Coach of the Year and also Journal News Coach of the Year. So definitely a great season. And always thank you to Coach Carpizzano, uh, our JV girls' basketball coach. He's there with us in practices, on the sideline. Um, always helpful. So, Coach Carp, I don't have anything you would like to say, but that's all I got.
I can only, um, echo, thank you, uh, Coach Lucian. Um, and, you know, as, as everybody here has said, you know, thank you to Mr. Luciana, Superintendent DeCarlo, um, President Mangan, um, everybody involved. I mean, this was, this was so fortunate that we could have this season. And I was lucky enough to coach in, um, win, uh, fall two with volleyball. And it was just, it, it was so great to see these kids, you know, and their faces light up and the opportunities that we were able to give them. So just thank you very much. And, uh, from, you know, from my heart and my family to your family and our family here as may, as may pack here. Thank you. Awesome.
You know, I, I think the big thing, you know, that we're going to take out of here, you know, is the amazing student athletes we have. But I think, you know, my short time here, what I've noticed with these programs is that there's a culture here. And it's not, and I'm not looking this as just a one year of success. I really think there's a strong foundation for these programs to be successful moving forward and for years to come. Like, I, I'm really impressed with our coaching staff and the seniors that are leaving, you know, they're going to be missed. But I think their footb- their footprint's been left on the program for the younger athletes to live up to. And like I said, the culture is there and very, very bright future for all our programs. And one last thing I'm going to say, um, you know, I know we're talking about our winter sports today, a quick update on fall two. Um, our cheerleaders, um, had an amazing, uh, fall two season. Um, they won, they won one of their competitions. And, you know, I'm biased to Mayapack. I think we got robbed in the sectional finals. We came and, you know, we, we were the runner-up. But, you know, um, easily could have won that. Uh, it was such a close difference between us and the championship team. So our cheerleaders had a great fall two season. And, uh, before, you know, before we came on to this meeting, I was at volleyball at John J. Cross River. And, you know, unfortunately, we didn't, you know, win that game. John J. Cross River was a very strong and impressive team. But for our team, you know, to make the regional championship and give the effort they did this year, um, was very impressive. So, you know, we had two more teams that made championship rounds and, you know, just came up short. And, you know, our football, like Coach McMahon said earlier, a lot of this started with, uh, you know, Coach DiMatteo's advocacy. And, you know, um, we got very far because of that. And it, it, what he started here turned out to be a statewide push. And our football team ends their season on Saturday at Lakeland, which is, you know, we got, we're going to be, we ended up playing all six games. A lot of programs in the section weren't able to do that. But we got a full season in for football. And, um, just really proud of what our fall two athletes were able to accomplish this year. And I just wanted to give a brief update on, on that season, uh, before we ended. So I really do appreciate your time and having us on tonight and recognizing our amazing student athletes. Thank you so much to the Board of Education.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Yeah, and thank you, Steve, for all you do and, 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 and Lynn and the, and the entire, uh, coaching staff at Mayapack High School. And, and you mentioned something, and I, I think it's important. You know, one of the things in my charges and, and, uh, there were some board members that were here when they hired me for a year. You know, one of the things in my charges and and uh, there were some board members that were here when they hired me four years ago, was to begin to bring Mayapack back to its accolades academically, athletically and its facilities. And I'm happy to say that as a part of our strategic plan, that's exactly what we're doing. We're building a program. You know, what's really important, two years ago, the board decided to reinstitute our full modified program. Sad to say, that did not happen last year uh, in the spring because of what happened with COVID. But next Monday, we start those those spring modified sports. So that's a perfect example of the the roadmap and the things that we're doing. Also, what's really important to your point, Steve, is that um, really the kids working together, not just on the field, but off the field. And and we see that as Coach mentioned with our scholar athlete teams that we have over and over again each year. And that's a credit to the coaches, but most importantly, to students. Because you know, we always hear, well, you know, it's always about athletics and then the academics. No, 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 they both go hand in hand and it's a part of what happens at Mayapack. And last but not least, just an update yesterday, Lo-Hud sent out their final girls basketball rankings and we were number three. So we were in the top three in Lo-Hud this year, the final rankings uh, with a 12-1 record. So that's like the the pinnacle of of what has happened this year with our girls basketball. And I I I thank um, I thank you, Steve, and I thank the coaches, not only of basketball, but all the sports uh, for the winter season and and doing just an outstanding job. So on behalf of myself and the Board of Education, and I know the community, and I want to just thank all of those who watched our games on local live. Because listen, what goes to show you also, local live doing that two years ago, who knew? That we have a pandemic and that our fans in the community will be able to watch these games on local live. It's just uh, something that we very much are happy with. And you know, we know how important that has become a part of our our sports uh, culture. So thank you again, Steve.
Back to you. I forgot to mention, I was talking about volleyball. Leah Vitello, one of our senior athletes on volleyball, was voted Lo-Hud Player of the Week yesterday. So another, I mean, the recognition, the recognitions our athletes have gotten this year, uh, you know, due to their hard work and it's been fantastic. And I, you know, I see the spring season, I'm looking for the success again and, you know, in the classroom and on the field. I think we're, where like I said, the culture is there and we're, you know, we're bound to be very successful on and off the floor. So um, thank you, thank you guys again for your time.
Thank you. President Morgan, back to you.
Thank you, Steve, and uh, thank you, Anthony. Okay, so we're going to slide down to and uh, and again, congratulations to uh, to all the athletes. Uh, it was really a pleasure. Um, it was a pleasure able to get to, get to some of the games. And of course, you know, all the coaches that were uh, that were here this evening, especially uh, uh, Vin Collins, uh, who was, who was, who was around when I was uh, when I was a uh, an athlete back here in the late seventies. So uh, so Vin, uh, thank you so much for all you do and wonderful job. Same with Tom McMahon, uh, you know, same with the Coach Skaz and Jason Conklin and Dave. And uh, just a great job, great all the way around. So um, so what we're going to do right now is we'll slide down uh, for communications on comment on uh, agenda items. We didn't have any comments for agenda items. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to slide down and uh, we have some housekeeping to do here. I'd like to get some uh, motions. So we have um, uh, the treasurer's report for uh, for um, February uh, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion uh, to accept the treasurer's report?
President, real quick, Mr. President, maybe I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Do we have a budget presentation before that? I'm seeing budget presentation after winter sports.
We do.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you're right, I was gonna, okay, yeah, there it is. So anxious. Okay, very good. So let's, so let's turn that over to um, uh, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Sandra Clohesi. And I think Sandra will have a, Sandra's got uh, our uh, our superintendent's recommendation for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Sandra.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am going to share my screen. Everyone see it?
Yes.
Great. All right, so good evening. Um, just starting off with the uh, our goal is balance the budget, all maintaining student instructional and extracurricular programs to support our students in the community. I believe we've done that in this budget. This uh, presentation will be shorter than usual, but um, we're just hitting the uh, highlights. Here's the snapshot, which shows our proposed budget at a hundred twenty-seven million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars. That is a two million sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollar increase or one point six five percent. The projected tax levy is eighty-nine million, seven fifty-five, seven oh six with a projected tax levy increase of one million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for a two point zero three tax compliant, um, tax levy, tax cap compliant. Our fund balance projected use is two million, eight hundred ten thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. And our reserves and interfund transfers use are one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-four from the tax reduction reserve and the four hundred and twenty-five thousand from the debt service. So bottom line for the tax cap is it is compliant. Uh, it requires a fifty percent approval, a simple majority. Uh, we started off this process with a two point four two increase through the application of the tax reduction reserve and increased building aid calculation. We were able to reduce the tax increase from two point four two to two point zero three. In addition, we applied four hundred and twenty-five thousand, was allocated from the debt service fund, which allows, also lowers the tax cap. This is the second of our four-year allocation for this this money. So when that four years is up, we will not have that money to reduce the tax cap by at that point. Total revenues, uh, here is the breakdown, state aid, miscellaneous, fund balance and reserves. Again, showing that total um, budget of one hundred and twenty-seven million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six for a one point six five budget to budget increase. And again, the tax levy is at two point zero three. Our expenditures must balance with our revenues. So you will see here, it's broken out between the administrative, the program and the capital at a total of the same total, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, or the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars. The, you will see um, the differences, the increase and decrease. Some of our increases and decreases because we did some relocation in our budgets as we spoke about with the BOCs and fixing position control. Are are a little different than you may have seen in the past because we did move some things out of program and into the other areas where they should have been um, to begin with. Now for the good news, um, is that we received the tentative tax um, assessment list for twenty twenty-one. Again, it's tentative. The final valuations do not happen until late July, early August, when they finalize the tax rule. But based on this tentative rule, we are showing that um, though the proposed increase to school tax levy is one million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, using the tentative twenty twenty-one assessment rule, the tax rate for one thousand dollars assessed value is estimated to decrease. You will see here, it estimated twenty-one, twenty-two for Carmel and Putt Valley is um, twenty-two dollars, twenty-two dollars and six cents essentially. Um, this past year, the actual was twenty-two um, dollars and thirty-two cents. So you see that decrease of twenty-six cents per one thousand dollars. So when you take that and put it into our calculation for an assessed value of four hundred thousand, you will see a decrease of a hundred and five dollars for the year or nine dollars per month. So as school tax assessments increase, the taxes spread amongst a higher tax base and this can cause the tax rate to decrease. So therefore, it's anticipated that that home assessed at four hundred thousand dollars, we'll see an approximate tax decrease annually of a hundred and five dollars. Please remember, this is a tentative role that we received today from Putnam County that we are using to calculate rather than use the twenty twenty tax rule because things have changed. The sale of houses, the sale of real estate, the prices of real estate have significant significantly increased, causing that tax taxable assess taxable assessment base to have increased. Taking that base across um, the, with the new tax levy, um, this is what it has resulted in. So um, though our taxes, again, yes, you're voting on an increase to the tax levy or the total budget. Is really what you're voting on is the total budget. The tax levy, which is a portion of the revenue, though that revenue is increasing based on the new assessments, the, it should not cause an increase in your tax bill based on a four hundred thousand dollar home. Would you like to ask questions before I go on? Okay, so sorry about that. Um, based, so what I would like to just bring up here is that we will propose that budget and we will, on May eighteenth, should it be defeated, the Board of Education has two um, choices, they can hold a second budget vote or they can immediately adopt a contingency budget. Now that second budget vote can be put out exactly the same as this, the one that we're putting out on May eighteenth, or it can be decreased, um, or immediately adopt a contingency budget. Once you adopt a contingency budget, we must um, reduce the tax levy by that one million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And this level of budget reductions will have a significant negative impact on academics, arts, athletics and community use of facilities by law. It's not, we first must reduce everything based on law and then um, we go from there. So there are different parameters on how we can work with our school budget if we went to a contingent budget. So this is a normal slide that I show in every presentation. It's just, this is the dollar amount that would have to be reduced if we defeated a budget and went to a contingency budget. That being said, proposition one, you vote on the total dollar amount of the budget, which is a hundred twenty-seven million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars. And then proposition two is for those buses, which is eight hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. They are separate propositions, so they can be voted on distinctly, either with a yes or no answer, if they each are separate. That being said, our budget vote will be held on May eighteenth. It will be at the Mayapack Central High School, it will be in the gym from six AM to nine PM. You will vote on the budget, on the uh, purchase of school buses and related equipment. And you will also uh, vote for school, school board elections.
Right.
And with that, I will take any questions.
I have a question. Thank you, Sandra, for that. Anyone else have a question? I don't know.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Okay. So um, thank you, Sandra, for the presentation. I guess um, tonight is the first night that the board is seeing uh, what I guess you had found out today about the assessments changing, is that?
That's the first, we received it today.
Right.
About midday.
Wow, talk about last minute, right? So I I guess just to understand, so you were saying that the decrease is tentative?
Because the, the tax rule is tentative, it's still tentative, the numbers are not final. Do I, do I know how much they may change from tentative to final? I don't. And neither does the county at this point. But there, these are the new assessment values, they basically went up a hundred and twenty-nine million or three point two five percent of the assessment roll.
So is this new to this year? Because I I don't remember prior budgets having this variable with it, that's, that's the only, my only question.
Meaning that the tentative role? Well, we make, a lot of times we don't receive the tentative role at this point in time. But with the new information, I thought it was important to use the tentative role because first of all, it varied significantly from last year's role. Um, and you know, the the real estate market has varied significantly from last year. The sale of houses have been significantly higher and both Putnam Valley and Carmel at our hundred percent valuation. So when they sell those houses, they come on the roll at the current price that they paid for the home.
That's the key, trustee Miss Safran, that's the difference. That's the difference, you're at a hundred percent. Years ago and years ago, not having a hundred percent evaluation for many, many, many years, it wasn't not equal. And therefore, that's why you had some of those fluctuations. Now being a hundred percent, and when the market goes up and house values go up, and as we know, houses aren't staying on the market for literally a day and anywhere from, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars over asking, that all adds up. And that's why you're seeing that happening this year, so to your point.
So that's what's really caused of this influx. So I guess what my, my, my question is, is we're voting on a two point oh three increase, but we're going to see an actual decrease in our taxes by the hunt, by the, based on a four hundred thousand dollar home, the numbers that you listed there.
Correctly, and again, it's based on that tentative role that we have no control over. But we don't assess the homes. Um, we will get those final numbers from the county when they're finalized. But a lot of times, those are affected more by equalization rates. And because we're at a hundred percent, we don't, we shouldn't see a very big fluctuation.
Yeah, it's assuming your assessment of your home stays the same, correct? So if you're.
Right, if your assessment goes up.
Right, if your assessment goes up, then your tax, but if your assessment were to stay the same, then your tax bill will go down.
Based on the information we have today, correct?
Right.
I don't have anything else right now, I'm still have to think about anything else, but please, anyone else?
I have a naive question here. So there, there's two sets of taxes that we get, the ones in September, which are school taxes. And then we get the town taxes in January. This, this new thing, the new information that just came in today, obviously is not related to the January tax, correct?
Correct. They'll, they use the twenty twenty assessment for your past, the twenty twenty, that's the town and county tax. The September tax is the school tax. And they use the new twenty twenty-one assessments usually finalized, like I said, usually uh, late July, early August.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I kind of agree with, I'm scratching my head like Lucy is because it's, we're voting out a budget that in effect, if things stay exactly the same, is is better than cost neutral, right?
Right, so, but in essence, like I said, the tax levy is one number. But then you have to take that tax levy and it has to be broken out amongst the assessables within your, for us, it's two towns. So we take that, we break that out amongst the two towns. And then, you know, it's broken down into thousand dollar assessments. So per one thousand dollars is, you know, basically what I showed it was going down about twenty-six cents per one thousand dollars of, I think that was what I had, or sorry. Cause I, let me just go to my page here for you. Um, not twenty, so, yes, twenty-six cents. So you know, when I first saw it too, I had a double take, um, had somebody else check my calculations. It's not a new spreadsheet for me, so it's really just a pop in of those numbers and everything calculates out. And I wanted to make sure and we double checked. And that is the difference that we're showing, um, going down from the twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents to the twenty-two dollars and six cents um, based on these new assessments.
Well, I guess this is just the commentary. I mean, we've gone in the last ten, twelve months from a, the state that's going to pull back twenty percent of our, our, our funding to now we're basically cost, cost, potentially cost neutral, which I think is amazing. And here's just one person's opinion, I think part of the reason that houses are selling at a hundred percent is because the school district is strong. So kudos to uh, you know, not patting ourselves on the back, but basically the quality of the school is such that you can basically assess these houses at that way. I mean, that's an editorial on my part, but uh, and again, I echo Lucy's, thank you, Sandra, for uh, getting this last minute information in, because I think it's critically important to get this into the, for the public. All right, thanks a lot.
Hey, great.
Yeah, Trust Delula made a really good point, because that's what it's all about too, is because our main objective, and I know the administrators know this, is to teach and educate our kids and prepare our youth. But if parents are flooding here with their kids, like my parents did fifteen, fourteen or fifteen years ago now, that's a sign that Mayapack's doing it right. We have kids in the schools that like it, but then also if we're bringing in more, that's the name of the game. So I will also pass along that congratulations on top of Trust Delulas, because that's, that's such a huge sign and that's critical. And that's exactly what we should all be working for every day.
Amen. Amen. Okay. Any other, anybody else? No? Go ahead. I'm having a tough time. I only see. Anybody else? Any other trustees? Any questions? We're good? Okay, terrific. Thank you very. All right, so communications. We didn't have any communications on comments on the on the consent agenda items for this evening. What I'd like to do now is jump down to our our housekeeping portion. Our we have motions to accept a series of reports. So I'd like to entertain a motion right now to accept the treasurer's report for February, our February 2021 meeting. Can I get a motion to accept, please?
No move.
Thank you, Ray. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Adam. All in favor, please?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. Warrants for the motion to approve the warrants for February 2021, motion to accept, please?
No move.
Thank you, David. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any of us? Thank you, Mike. Any opposed? Okay. Revenue appropriations for February 2021, a motion, please, to accept. A move. Thank you, Tanner. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Budget transfers for February 2021, a motion to accept the budget transfers. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, David. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Any opposed? Okay. Work session minutes of work session minutes for our from our March meeting, March 23rd, 2021, a motion to accept, please?
No move.
Thank you, Ray. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And finally, our regular Board of Education minutes of March of March 25, 2021, a motion to accept, please?
No move.
David, second. Thank you, Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. I will turn it back to our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony DeCarlo. And for his superintendent report, Anthony, take it away.
Thank you very much, President Mangan. And I just want to, again, thank Sandra Coles, the entire cabinet, the administrative team and working through this very difficult time of preparing the budget. A lot of hard work went into it. And I just want to take an opportunity to thank the board for their diligence over the last number of months and getting to where we got to tonight. And just thank everybody very, very much. So probably during the one of the most difficult years, and I think trustee McCracken and Delulo just echoed that, that we've ever had to go through with ups and downs and not knowing where things were going. So thank you to all of you. I just want to go back to what was said before. You know, we talk about Maypack and what Maypack does and it always steps up. So with this cheer competition that took place on Saturday. It was difficult to find a school that wanted to host it and do it in a manner that was COVID safe. And Maypack stepped up like it always does. And I have to tell you, being there and listening to not only the coaches, but many athletic directors who came to watch their girls cheer, just lauding Maypack for stepping up and for doing it. And the manner that it was done and the manner that the teams came in, the parents were able to come in and watch them. And then they would rotate out and then the on deck team would come in. It was just done very, very well, very thoughtfully and in 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 the lines of COVID preparedness. And I just want to thank, again, Maypack for stepping up and hosting that cheer competition. It was very much appreciated by all those in Putnam Northern and Dutchess for us to be able to do it. So just want to take some time to recognize that. Once again, Maypack is being recognized by the NEPBIS conference. This is a conference that takes place every year. And we have been invited to present. Amy Mahoney, Dara Berkowitz, Paul Clemens, Chris Burr. And under the leadership of Abel Luvich, they will be presenting this year. They're excited to be able to present on a national level and talk about the initiatives and activities that the MHS Climate Committee has done over the years to support positive culture, climate, and social emotional learning at Maypack High School. So congratulations to Maypack High School and being able to present at this leadership forum. Also, I want to congratulate at this time Mr. David Gordon, who has been honored with receiving the Senior Fellow by the James Madison Foundation. And it's really important to understand that James Madison Foundation is a is a fellowship and of secondary level government and civic teachers to become outstanding educators of the US Constitution. And Mr. Gordon was selected this year to be actually involved in that program, which he'll be able to now come back to not only the middle school, but the secondary school educators. And ultimately, this filters down to the students about the importance of the Constitution, how it has molded who we are as a country and will in the future. And and all the different aspects of the importance of really from that civics point of view and understanding about the Constitution. So we're excited about Mr. Gordon getting that that fellowship, which is very, very highly competitive. So kudos to him and we look forward to him presenting to our our teachers and ultimately to the board on the work that he's going to be doing over the next year. I know with COVID and and there are questions because we're at that time of the year when we come to end of the year activities, AKA prom, graduation, fifth grade moving up, eighth grade moving up, and what's going on? And as with this entire pandemic, this is fluid. But I were to tell you today, this is what's going to happen based on the guidance. We all know that things can change in a week, never mind two months from now when we get to June. Suffice it to say, we are working extremely hard to be able to hold these events. Mind you, with the proper mitigation, with the approval of our local Department of Health, because this is very important. Any of these activities that are taking place at our schools and the almost the entire majority of them will be outside. A plan is submitted to the Department of Health and they will be checking them and then, you know, giving us the go ahead to do that. I'm going to be working closely with Frank Gugliari from Putnam, Westchester Bosse's, along with Dr. Stowell, and and looking at those activities that we have planned, their locations, to make sure that we are following guidelines and need to do what has to be done. It would be remiss if I didn't report on some concerns that I do have, whether this is just speculation or innuendo or whether it's true or not. I cannot, we cannot as a board, control what goes on after school hours, whether it's on weeknights, whether it's on weekends. And there have been some rumors and innuendos that, you know, students are looking to have, quote unquote, some of their own events outside of the school district because they wouldn't have to then follow those regulations. That's not something you want to do, although I can't control it. Because if an event takes place, especially prior to prom and or graduation, and we have a super super spreader or students get caught up in quarantining, they will not be able to participate in those events. So I please caution you that if you do that, you are really taking a risk. I know that Putnam County has strongly urged, nobody can dictate, but strongly urged that 16 and 17 year olds, again, as a family discussion, look to get vaccinated because that will help tremendously. Because if you're with a classmate or somebody else that winds up testing positive and you are vaccinated, you don't fall into that protocol. So these are really important steps and things to look at as we get ready for our end of the year activities, which we will be doing and and looking to do again. You know, somewhat not at the extent of two years ago, but at least doing things where last year we could not do anything. I know that Dr. Lawrence met last night with his PTO council. And he's going to be sending out some of those tentative dates over the next couple of days. So people can plan a little bit of what's happening, which include prom, which include graduation, which include Senior Day, which include ceremonies for our academic awards. They'll be outside ceremonies for our our sports awards, which will be outside. So all these things we're looking forward to doing. But please, this pandemic is not over. We cannot let our guards down. We want to make sure that we can have these events and have them in a safe manner and make sure that all of our students are a part of that. Also, as you are aware, Mr. Tremblay and and a group of teachers and and have been really working on looking at a summer program come this summer for our students, most likely in the month of July. And you'll be seeing a number of surveys coming out with regards to that. But I want to be clear about this. There will be specific criteria with regards to summer school, which I know that Mr. Tremblay and his team are working on with regards to that. Teacher recommendation, testing and other things as we look towards a summer program coming up. And you'll be seeing some of that information coming out within the next week and surveys that'll be accompanying that. So once again, the weather is getting nice. As you know, the New York State Department of Health has issued new guidance. We continue to do what we're doing. We're not stopping that. But there will be some changes, especially in our elementary schools when it comes to lunch, because the guidance is clear about eating and being six feet apart while you're eating or while you're taking a snack. Our principals have worked closely with our teachers and we are developing a plan to meet what those specific needs and criteria are. And so we're excited about continuing to do what we're doing. On another note, again, I go back to COVID and the pandemic. We have more kids coming into school. We have more density. There is a variant that's out there. There are going to be times when we are going to have students and our staff quarantine if they are positive or they are in close proximity to somebody who may be a positive case. So have you seen in the last couple of weeks, there have been some circumstances where we've had to do a pause so that we can clearly make sure that we are reaching those individuals who truly fall into that category of proximity. I know that that might at times be alarming, but there there is no wiggle room with that. That is something clearly that we have to adhere to. Those are state and county guidelines. And we do work closely with our county. And to that point, we are working hard and not having to quarantine maybe as many as we would have had to in the past because our windows are open, our doors are open. The bus hatchback are open because the weather is getting nice. So or we're looking to do a variety of different things. But I just want to let that community know that that will happen. And there may be circumstances where we may have to close a school for a day so that we can do a pause and really ascertain who those people are that need to be quarantined. So, Mr. Mangan, that's my report for today. I throw it back to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Carlo. And again, thank you for all your efforts and along along with the leadership team. It's been, as you said, it's been quite quite a very interesting year and a year of perseverance and and resilience. And I think I think you would all agree that that everybody's come through and are coming through in flying colors. So, you know, we just thank God and pray that everybody stays safe. So with that said, we have, we have a donation from the Lakeview PTO. And I would like my vice president, Mr. Adam Savino, by reading the reading the donation today.
He's shaking his head.
I will read it, but I will I will abstain from the vote.
Of course.
Okay. Let me pull it up. One second, please. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education hereby accepts a donation from the Lakeview Elementary PTO in the amount of $5,656.98 for seven picnic tables to be used for the students to enjoy lunch.
That's awesome. That is just amazing. Unbelievable. That's that's really great stuff. Thank you so much. We have, yep, we've got some Board of Education committee reports that we have to do also.
President? We do have to, we do have to vote on.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry about that. Getting getting on base. Okay, so on the on the donation, could we, could I get a motion to accept the donation from the Lakeview PTO? Thank you, Ray. Second, please.
Second.
Second, just really quickly, a roll call vote, please. Melody, could you read it off?
Sure. Mangan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino, I know you're abstaining. Trustee Msafra?
Yes.
Trustee Simone?
Yes.
Trustee Fafaro?
Yes, thank you, Austin of PTO.
Trustee Keane?
Yes. Blink.
Blink, sorry.
Trustee McDonna?
Yeah.
Trustee Dulula?
Yes, thank you.
And trustee McCracken?
Aye, thank you so much.
Great job all the way around there. Okay, so we have some, so our our Board of Education committees have been extremely busy as always. So what I'd like to do right now is we have a policy committee report. Senior trustee Lucy Msafra, Policy Committee, please?
Good evening, everyone. So the members of the Policy Committee, we met on April 6th. It was myself, President Michael Mangan, Assistant President Adam Savino, our counsel Daniel Pedigro, counsel Allison Smith. At the time, interim superintendent Frank Neely and our clerk, Melody LaRaca. At the time, we briefly reviewed our harassment policy and we reviewed our purchasing policy. We also had an HR committee meeting on the 15th of April at 7:00 PM. In attendance was myself, Superintendent Anthony DeCarlo, Assistant Superintendent Deborah Legato. She's Assistant Superintendent of HR, Vice President Adam Savino, trustee Ray McDonough, and Board President Mike Mangan. And we reviewed confidential items which are listed on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senior Trustee Lucy Msafra. We have a Finance Committee report. Trustee Ben Dululo, Ben?
Yeah, I'm just gonna just substitute the report that was that Sandra read out. We we've met multiple times. And obviously, I think in the, you know, the the budget is going to be presented, is been presented. I think we're going to vote on it tonight. It will be will be voted on 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 May 18th. So I encourage everybody in who can vote to please vote on that election. So thank you. Back to you, President Mangan.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Trustee Dululo. Okay, so we have, so we have a consent agenda. And what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to get a motion to accept this evening's consent agenda.
No move.
Thank you, David. Can I get a please? Second, Larry. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We will move, we will move over to. Okay, so we have resident. Okay, so we have resident comments. Before we get to the, before we get to our, we have two resident comments for this evening. We have Mr. Jack Mata and Chris Harrigan are going to be speaking with us this evening. What I did want to, what I did want to announce quickly was the the people that would be running for the Board of Education. As we, as you know, we have three, we have, we have three spots that are that. And so I wanted to just share with the the public that of the 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 names that will be on the ballot, the six names that will be on the ballot in the in the order that they will appear on the ballot that you will see in May. So first up, we have our sitting Lucy Msafra. Second, we'll have a. Third, we'll have our sitting trustee Dave Fafaro. On fourth, we will have Michael Martin. Fifth on the ballot list will be Roger Duran. And sixth on the list will be. fifth on the ballot list will be Roger Duran and sixth on the list will be Allison Mueller so obviously good luck to good luck to all of the to all of the people that are that are running this year for the school board so with that said
President Mongan just to just to the public to be aware the PTO council always does some type of a a night a meet the candidates night so please look out for that it'll be it'll be something that'll be on my weekly update once the date and times are established with regards to that so just so that the community understands that so just thank you for allowing me to do that thank you
yeah no absolutely no problem at all okay so we'll go right now so what I'd like to do is get over to our resident comment and our first resident comment will be from Jack Mata Jack
he's coming in now
yep very good
everybody
good evening Jack how are you doing
I'm doing fine how are you yourself
very good thank you welcome welcome and thanks for joining us this evening
thank you and thank you guys for having us having us speak as always first I want to say welcome back Mr DeCarlo Mr Mongan knows I've reached out to him and checked on you a couple of times so make sure you were in good health welcome back as you know we've all been watching the meetings we've been asking questions and trying to be as involved as possible so I have a few questions and I know I only have three minutes do you want me to read everything and then you can answer my questions do you want to break it down question by question
well Jack let's let's we want you just let's get the questions out and we'll we'll take it as it comes
okay great so first regarding contact tracing and school buses I asked a question a few weeks ago I didn't hear back about it so if there's a positive case how does that affect the school buses so that's one the second thing I think Mr DeCarlo had I just want to maybe clarify I want to make sure I understood you explained a little bit today which is great let me sure understood the pause that you discussed that would be school based not district based I also wanted to ask about the barrier so with the state changing now to the three foot do we still need the barriers in the classroom if we don't is it possible to use those barriers in the cafeteria to help alleviate having lunch and another thing was at the work session on Tuesday Mr DeCarlo had mentioned next year's schedule so I understand the schedule is probably not out yet or finalized but there was a mention regarding pay fifth grade into sixth grade eighth grade into ninth grade that people would understand you know the success this year of getting them into school what were you what was your thought process are they going to vote in earlier is it are you talking about just an orientation so they get used to the school just didn't know if you had an idea I'm not going to hold you to it I just want to know what your thought process was with that and then I thought of another question while I was watching and as a taxpayer right we're all talking about the budget and I understand the budget needs to get passed every year the budget needs to get passed so just wondering when we had an interim superintendent brought in what part of the budget did that come from to pay for an interim superintendent just so I have an idea of how the budget works and is the thing slotted for situations like that and again thank you for your time and that's that's all I have
all right so Mr Mata will work backwards if that's okay with you so I'll let Mrs Cloessio Superintendent can tell you a little bit of what happens with regards to the superintendent and the interim and what happens what budget line that would come from Sandra if you wouldn't mind
sure so regarding the unexpected cost for an intern superintendent we would look through our budget to look for any area of surplus and we would transfer the money from one line to another now as you know it when you prepare a budget it truly is a budget so some lines will be over and some will be under when you get to the end of the year so we look through that we look at what what our projection is for the year and then we'll make a transfer
okay
the next question Mr Mata with regards to next school year and I'll let Dr Stowe talk a little bit about social emotional readiness and and a little bit of what that means is we get kids to come back for next year so what we learned this year and because of the fact of you know the delay and what happened the first couple of weeks the the conversations that were had with the teachers with the administrators in central office was to really as mentioned before those grade levels that were new to the building just to have those kids in the building by themselves to get acclimated and not to have everybody come back at once right especially the kindergartners trying to navigate hallways and rooms and the cafeteria fifth graders going into sixth grade the same kind of thing and then of course the eighth graders going into ninth grade and our feedback from that was that not only did the kids appreciate it the staff but also the parents because the kids came home and said you know what mom and dad it was great we were just there we were getting a better understanding of the building and what was happening so what I'm saying is that in the beginning of the year we're looking at that scheduling that's something that we want to maybe make a part of what we do all the time because it really made a lot of sense so that's what I'm talking about what some of those nuances may be as well as and Dr Stowe can talk a little bit about that social emotional piece for kids as they come back to hopefully you know a regular type of school year that we haven't known in almost a year and a half Dr Stowe you just want to maybe echo some of that work that you were doing with your group
sure Superintendent DeCarlo I'll be brief I'll kind of reiterate what I've said at the work session and what other meetings we've had with the public we have a committee a district wide social emotional learning committee it's made up of parents students different types of staff members and we've been working over this past year to look at a systematic K through 12 social emotional framework that we can implement over the next three years so that not only we knew this was important prior to the pandemic but also after the pandemic it's much more important given the trauma that not only our students experienced but our staff experienced and our community experienced so we're going to be looking at a program that we're going to be hopefully presenting to the Board of Education in sometime around June about our plan for it but I'll tell you it's an evidence based program it's systemic it's a framework it is something that's going to be a part of the fabric of what we do so that we can be emotionally intelligent when we teach our kids when we interact with our kids so that everybody in our school community can feel connected can feel valued and can feel respected and there's a framework and it's called social emotional learning I don't want to do the big reveal tonight but the team has been you know that committee has been working really hard and we'll kind of unpack that a little bit as where we sharpen our pencils a little bit more about how we're actually going to implement it
all right thank you
the next question and Dr Stowe I'll have you intercede with that one about the barriers and you know the possibility of taking them down and using them in the cafeteria I think it's apropos of the discussions that we have today and maybe we can kind of you know give a little bit of a thought what we're looking to do with our students outside and in inclement weather and some of the things that we're looking to do
well as Mr DeCarlo said on a Friday around five something a state dropped guidance on all school districts and what was true prior to that 540 drop of that is no longer true six feet is not six feet three feet is not three feet and barriers should not not exist so we've been on some calls and I will just kind of say this barriers are now no longer recommended by the New York State Department of Health with respect to each school classrooms can now be three feet however with respect to eating that still must be six feet so as Mr Carlos said we were scrambling working alongside our building principals working with the Department of Health getting feedback from our educators about the best way to do this we have a limited amount of space we have pretty much ninety four percent of our elementary students this is not really an issue with the secondary because they're already eating at six feet apart we're going to be using multiple spaces we're going to be using outdoor spaces we may in inclement weather be using indoor spaces and staggering when people eat we may be using cafeteria spaces depending on the weather more information as we really start to with our principals because it's about logistics and about planning and how are we going to supervise kids and how we're going to get them lunch and how we're going to clean up after them we're going to finalize that next week will the building principals will be telling their communities about how they're going to do it every building is different they have different levels of outdoor space they have different levels of indoor space so it may be a little bit varied varied by by building but we're working on that in terms of having the barriers up during lunch it's a good question however I was on a New York State webinar and barriers are not longer recommended so I don't know what use they would be other than getting dirty and another area needed to be cleaned so I'm not so sure that barriers right now are something that the New York State Department of Health or our local department health would support
well local because the state is being used in other school districts so for cafeterias so maybe it may be it's Putnam County but I know other areas are using them
and that may be Mr Mata all I can tell you is what I heard on a statewide statewide New York State Department of Health was barriers are no longer recommended by the CDC and so that means New York State Department of Health is following that CDC guidance
okay Mr Mata as far as the second question the pause go it would be unique to the specific school it sometimes it could be the school and as a whole depending on the extent of the number of people who may have tested positive it could be a grade level it could be a series of grade level but I'm hoping I mean I I don't foresee unless something happens that you know none of us want to see that the entire district would have to be closed down so it would it could be depending on the this the implication of the actual number of individuals who test positive but hopefully that's less and less because more and more people have become vaccinated and therefore not having to go into that specific protocol and then the last question on buses I mean Dr Stowe please chime in with me on this the weather being nice now and windows being open and the hatch being open it depends on the location of said individual and how far extended it goes and suffice it to say you know although we've had we have more students on buses right now we have not seen any explosion of that happening on the bus Dr Stowe you want to talk about that because I know you work closely with the DOH and Shanna on this
yes thank you Mr DeCarlo I think you said it very well it's about the amount of time the 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 whether the windows were open and and the proximity meaning the distance between the positives so every cases unique kid could be on the bus for like two minutes which would have a different impact than a thirty five minute bus ride with a kid sitting next to them so again we have assigned seats we go we look we make sure we know where the known positive is if we have any questions because it's a close call we don't want to unnecessarily quarantine people we'll call the Department of Health we'll tell them about the specifics of that particular bus ride how many days and we do try it does take a little bit longer but we do try to eliminate anybody that doesn't need prolonged quarantine
okay thank you thank you
that's terrific Jack thank you for those excellent questions and Mr DeCarlo thank you for for having our superintendents here to help to help answer those those excellent questions from Mr Mata Jack nice nice work thank you
thank you Mr Mongan
okay we'll we're going to bring we're going to bring in Mr Mr Harrigan right now Chris why don't you come in and join us unmute and come on in
hello can you hear me
yes Chris thank you ahead
all right so I know it's been a long I'll try to be as brief as possible I just had basically two two areas of concern or two questions and I was looking at maybe the possibility of a public board meeting in the next few weeks or a real town hall style meeting but I think it's it's been obviously it's been a very unusual year and I think it would be a good a nice opportunity for the district to be transparent show the community what's been going on the past year and share some of their plans for the future I I know it's been very helpful just watching these these meetings that you're holding in the budget meaning by I know a lot of people I know they're up on YouTube and things like that but I know a lot of people might be better if it was in person because I will say that many parents are considering voting the budget down because they're they are frustrated they don't want to do it we know the ramifications of what could come of it but they feel that there's no other choice given you know the the confusion or lack of transparency that's gone on this past year and you're not to mention a year of miseducation or half education that and I know that's you know that's just the result of the situation but I think to continue on and just to throw a budget out there without an outreach to the public it would be nice to have a little outreach of you know and I think we could educate the public on on what's in the budget because just just the brief thing I saw tonight was it kind of got me thinking like oh maybe you know I there's a lot of things I don't understand about about the budget process and and you know I was just hoping maybe there could be a public forum for that and not a video teleconference before the budget vote that would that's just my piece on the budget I just just to touch on the you guys answered a lot of my questions already so I was seeing if there's any updated memos from the Putnam County Department of Health regarding the April ninth guidelines that got sent out and from the state and if that is happened if we can get a copy of that and lastly I was just going to ask we were hearing I don't know if it's still going on but some classes are being taught with a teacher that's that's physically in the school but it's being taught remotely and if it is still taking place if if and when the school district would be ending that provision or if it's done on a case by case basis thank you
thank you Mr Harrigan so we'll talk about the budget every year we 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 myself in this case Ms Cloessie in the past was the other Assistant Superintendent we actually will set up a meeting with every single school so it's individual to that school we go through the whole entire budget will be a question and answer period so it really so I go around to every single school I go around to Rotary I go around to senior citizens I go to the library so I try to take care of every aspect and we are and Ms LaRaca is working on what that calendar is and you'll get there'll be notification that'll be on the website and then the PTOs will do their own separate invitations to each one of the parents within that specific school and we'll do exactly that we'll go through the whole budget and go through what's in there what's happening with that as as far as the question goes with the the updates from the DOH and I'll let Dr Stowe talk about this their their stance right now Mr Harrigan is status quo so whatever we're doing as a district keep doing the real big issue that came up that with Dr Stowe mentioned and I did is the lunch piece in the elementary schools so that's that we're working on that to kind of be in guidance with that but everything else what they're saying and to your point they had a big meeting a week ago too a week ago from today with the entire state because they were blindsided to by it and so we're keeping everything status quo the way it is right now with the exception of the lunch piece so they're not making any wholesale changes they're not doing anything else in regard to that what they did say and I'll echo what I said before as we're looking at these end of the year events and things that we're doing we just have to run it by them and they have to sign off on you know so for example I'm going to use the the high school stadium for you know scholarship night or academic awards or whatever how many people are you having how they're going to be socially distanced where are the kids going to be where are the parents going to be and then as long as you're in those parameters they'll sign off on it and we're okay that's really the two big things as of now with regards to that what else am I missing I asked a question on the public where was another question you asked I must have just skipped over
I believe it was the one about the teachers being teaching
oh remote
remote yeah
yeah and so if I'm understanding that right and I'll let Mr Tremblay chime in you're saying that the teacher is teaching and the kids are there with with maybe a monitor and a or an aide while the kid while the teacher is
remote
to the classroom is that the question
yes yes yeah
okay so I will let Mr Tremblay and Assistant Superintendent for HR explain a little bit about that and and why that continues to happen and what's you know what's happening over the next two months a lot of that has to do with you know some of the issues of the individual you know and still being able to be there with the kids but not in person because they may have some kind of medical condition or something else going on or they might have been quarantined that Mr Tremblay or Ms Legato if you want to just echo that
thank you Mr Carlo primarily we see this occur at the elementary school with respect to classes such as art music and color and part of that has to do with our original reopening plan another part has of that has to do with space in terms of the schedule and the spacing of the building and it also has to do with some mitigation factors that are in place in terms of the music instruction primarily at the elementary we have them because of the respiratory particles that could be dispersed and the we have them, because of the respiratory particles that could be dispersed and the guidance that was there, we decided it was safer to have the specials, that special class of music remote in with a teacher. Um, the teacher would remote into a classroom with a monitor supervising the students. In a similar aspect, we have in our reopening and mitigation plan, uh, the limit, want to limit students sharing supplies. Uh, and so that was also a consideration when we talk about the art classes, where we have our art teachers connect remotely to the students in the classroom, and also those students who are remote at home have that opportunity to connect into that classroom as well, too. So part of it has to do with the mitigation factors that we have in place. Part of it has to do also with scheduling, uh, speaking to our principals, watching the buildings of our principals. Uh, when we increased the in-person learning opportunities, we, we had some steps that we wanted to go to first. First of all, making sure that our classrooms were, were distanced in the proper manner. And then principals wanted to make sure they saw how our buildings run, because if you, if you run a building or seen a school district, uh, school building run, you know, it's a delicate orchestra every day, or orchestration every day of processes and practices, movement of students and movement of staff. So they wanted to make sure they had everything safe. As you, as you know, the guidance changed as well, so it's adjusting to that and seeing how school day runs, too. So I know those things, we're looking at them to see, uh, as we always do, if our practices are still in line with the guidance, but also if there's any way that we can change them safely and appropriately uh, to support improved instruction opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I, can I ask one little addition to that, to the same point? Um, previously, when you had, uh, reading specialists or math intervention, interventionists, um, those children were taken out of the classroom somewhere and taught. Is that still going on now, or is that, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing different situations in different schools? Um, maybe you can touch on that, how that's actually working now? They could, how the, how the, the math and reading assistance is taking place?
Uh, so trustee Savino, I have to check with each individual building to see if their practices have changed or what those specific practices are. In a similar manner, we wanted to make sure that we had, uh, we were able to safely welcome back increased in-person student classroom. And then I know principals were looking at other structures of instruction, once we were able to accomplish that. So I will follow up with the buildings on that, on that individual piece, because a different building may have a different practice.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike, and Chris, uh, Chris Harrigan, thank you so much for your, for your comment. Uh, and again.
I just want to say something to Mr. Harrigan. I just also want to let you know that we did try to do this evening's meeting in person, because I know that was one of your questions. And, uh, while we attempted, uh, there were audio issues that prevailed. Um, maybe Dr. Stowe could comment on that, because that was discussed on Tuesday evening of why we couldn't be in person this evening.
Uh, sure. Um, in order for the board to be able to meet, we, uh, the requirements of that meeting were to have board members in person and some board members remote in. Um, one of the things, if you know about Zoom or any sort of video conference, if, if two people are in the room, uh, there's a lot of feedback. I can tell you that, uh, the professionals in the, you know, TV and cable industry have professional producers, the sound producers that do that. We are not capable of doing that. So there are, the technical issues had to do with audio by having people in the room participate, meaning the community, board members participate and board, uh, in the room, and board members participate remotely through the use of Zoom. We, we just don't have a sound mixing board. We're looking at solutions, uh, and IT department's expertise is not sound and TV production. Uh, we just don't have that capability, but we're looking at options to do that, so that we can have that duality of both.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Dr. Stowe. And I think it's important also, I mean, we've also, you know, the Zoom and, and my hats off to, uh, to our district clerk Mel LaRaca for, you know, being able to put the Zooms and put the webinars together for us. Uh, you know, as we stay within the, uh, within the state guidelines, uh, that continued to afford the opportunity to, you know, to meet via Zoom. And I think we, you know, it took a little, a little rocky in the beginning, but I think we really, uh, we really were able to get, uh, at least, you know, during the, during this pandemic, I think we're really able to do a pretty good job with, uh, with getting, uh, you know, getting the public in and getting, yeah, getting the word out to the public. So, um, you know, I'm very indebted to everybody that made that happen. Thank you. So, um, so Chris, again, thank you so much for your, for your comments. Um, that'll, that's it for our resident comments.
Okay.
Yeah. Mike, you got muted, President, President Mangan. Who muted me? Come on now. So what I'd like to do is, before we close, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, once again, thank our, uh, our, our administrative team, our leadership team, our, our teachers, our, and then, and then everything that goes into, uh, into what, you know, what we referred to earlier as, as just really, you know, how, how it brings it all together. You know, the, how we get to the schools, how we get people moving, you know, moving into the community and looking at, you know, our schools and, and houses that are flying off the market in, you know, in four or five, you know, in, in, in an hour or so. People going, people bidding full price and then going, you know, you know, thousands of dollars above. And, and it starts, and it really starts with the, you know, with the leadership team. It starts with our, our, our teachers, but it's also a big part of the, the school community is our custodians, our monitors, our teaching assistants, our, our school resource officers, our bus drivers and transportation department, our clerical unit, our grounds management team. Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes into pulling this off, folks. And, uh, and I think, I think we've, we've, we've shown that we can do it, we can do it pretty darn good. And, um, and I, and I'd like to think that that's a big, you know, big, you know, component, big portion of what makes us so, you know, makes us so special. So, um, so I, again, wanted to thank everybody for that. And with that, Superintendent DiCarlo, back to work with you, and, uh, and you look terrific. And thank you, uh, thank you very much for, for all your efforts this evening. Uh, may I please entertain a motion to close this evening's meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ken. Can I get a second, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was Larry and Dave, I believe. And, uh, and I know it's tough to, it's tough to see, I can only see the side. Who was it? Did you see him, Tanner? Who was it?
My name is Ray.
It's kind of like a photo finish. Sometimes it's Ray, sometimes, but in any case, so I'll recognize it as, as, as Ray. Can I, uh, as trustee McDonough, can I get a, uh, all in favor, please?
All right. Can I?
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, and, uh, good night, everybody stays.
Good night, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Nice work, everyone. Thank you so much.